I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on February 7th, 2022, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $366,121.34. F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $153,232.53. Item G, resolution number 6847, executing amendment number four to the agreement between the city and the Division of Public Health of the Department of Health and Human Services for the construction of new distribution mains and replacement of existing distribution water mains, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. H, resolution number 6848, entering into a farm lease with Don Esaw for farming purposes, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. I, resolution 6849, appointing Vicki Honeycutt to the resident -- excuse me, as the resident advisor to the Beatrice Housing Authority Board. J, resolution number 6850, appointing Larry Ramsey to the Beatrice Housing Authority Board. K, resolution number 6851, appointing Cheryl Worth to the Beatrice Housing Authority Board. Item L, resolution number 6852, designating the 15-minute loading and unloading parking stall located on the west side of North Fifth Street, starting 212 feet south of the south side of High Street, as a bus-loading and unloading parking stall. And item M, resolution number 6856, entering into a farm lease with Greg Delabar for pasture purposes. Any item that a council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Next is a public hearing on the new application of Colleen's Catering LLC, doing business as Vintage Venue, for a catering endorsement to their Class C-1, 122011 liquor license.
All right, so a Class I license that Colleen Catering has today allows alcoholic liquor -- alcohol or liquor to be on sale, which allows beer, wine, and still spirits. A catering endorsement then would allow them to deliver, sell, or dispense liquor for consumption at a designated SDL location. So if somebody had a special designated liquor license, they then could have Colleen be the one to cater that particular event there.
So the location where she would cater would have to have the SDL license?
Correct.
Okay.
Only within the city?
Those would be the only ones that we would take up.
Yeah, that's what I meant. This would only cover us.
Yes, I would assume if it's outside, then you should have to get jurisdiction from whoever has an SDL.
Any questions, gentlemen, from the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:04 PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:04 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero.
I move that the new application of Colleen's Catering LLC, doing business as Vintage Venue, for catering endorsement to their Class I, 122011 liquor license, be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, the application of Colleen's Catering be approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Do we have any others in the city that have that?
I don't know for sure if Mayo's has a Class I with a catering license.
I believe Class Six. I know they have a catering one, and we can't pull them. They have a catering one as well.
Okay. Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Next is a public hearing to consider the rezoning application of Dennis Rash for parcel ID number 010876706, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to be rezoned from general commercial and single-family residential to R2 to multifamily residential district R4.
So before you have a map up there that shows you, but you're essentially about 25th and Scott Street there is a parcel ground that's just north of that location. Today it's zoned, general commercial on the north portion of the property, about the north 50 feet. The south portion of that lot is zoned today, R2. The proposal is to rezone at R4. R4 is what everything south of there is, so Flowing Springs, Cover Bridge Heights, all those are zoned R4 today. So we're looking to extend that into that northern property line right there. R4 allows duplexes, is what it allows.
Yeah. I can understand him wanting to take it off for the general commercial. I mean, there's so much thing -- so many things that are allowed in general commercial. I mean, short of a nuclear reactor, you could put just about anything in that. My only concern is if he's just planning on duplexes or even triplexes, I guess I don't have an issue with that or concerned, but is he planning -- did the -- does he give them any indication what his plans were?
This property is under contract and to be transferred, and the new property owners are looking to install or build duplexes on the lots.
Okay.
Low income?
No.
Not in that area, I wouldn't think. Yeah, good question.
No, they'd be market rate units.
Because I don't want anything in there that's going to be like some of the low-income triplexes and duplexes that we put in elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
Because there are two or three places that we know is not.
That's all I got.
Gary?
I would add that I think Tobias would agree with this, that the developer that wants to do this made mention that this is -- he couldn't believe how easy it was to do business in Beatrice and to get through all the hoops because there isn't as many as in Lincoln and the other. And I think that says something about where we're at with our regulations, that we're not overburdening anybody with our regulations.
No, I was also told Tobias that they're going to extend the road down and make cul-de-sac down in there.
That's yet to be determined. They're looking to do something. Cul-de-sac hasn't been discussed. What's been discussed is having the road come in and basically go around, so you'd have kind of a circle in the middle. You get the houses in the middle, you have houses on the outside. It was kind of the initial design, but that'll, once you get an engineer involved and start seeing how big the road has to be, what kind of curves you have to put on the road, that'll tell you what you can actually fit in there.
And if he does, he's going to have to build those to our specs, correct?
That's one thing that he's looking at. He has indicated maybe the possibility of looking at a planned urban development, but those are things that have yet to be just talked about in great depth.
So if he builds that road, will we be responsible for it? Will he be responsible for it?
If he builds it to our specs and makes it a city street and plats it that way, then we would be responsible for it. If he makes it a planned urban development, then he would be responsible for the streets. And that's a decision that ultimately that developer will have to make, there are pluses and minuses going both ways, but that decision has not been made at this time.
And will there be a caveat put in there that if he does not build it, 15 years down the line, that he won't be coming back wanting the city to replace it and do stuff?
I mean, he always has the right to come back and ask, but that'll be for future councils to decide at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Everybody knows where the property is located. Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:09 PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Next is a public hearing to consider amending the previously adopted formal policy concerning the expenditures authorized by the Local Government Miscellaneous Expenditure Act, Nebraska Revised Statute, Sections 13-2201 to 13-2202.
We have previously adopted a local government miscellaneous expenditure policy, if you will, which mirrors a state statute. There have been some changes to state statutes. We would like to make some of those changes to our policy. Pursuant to state law, you have to have a public hearing before you would make such changes to that one. The changes we're looking at are, one, removing the training from our current policy. We recently adopted the training policy, so those are already included in another policy, and we don't see the need to have them in two different policies, so we'd look to remove those. Two, the state statute allows, if you have a recognition dinner, to have $50 per employee. Ours today says 25. We'd look to match that with state statute allows. And then the last one is the change with the awards. Today ours has, if you've been here for five years, you get $50. 10 years, you get $100 reward. You know, it kind of goes in increments, up to 35. So one, if you have an employee who's been here for more than 35 years, ours seems to limit you at that 35 years of awards. Also, we had some questions come up. You know, if somebody leaves at 32 years, there's nothing in there that really clarifies. And so it's -- the way it's broken out today, it's $10 per year. And we just want to clarify that this -- have the policy read that it's $10 per year, and so you don't have those questions. The same amount of money is expended, but just make it a little clearer. So those are the proposed changes in the policy.
From the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:11 PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:11 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Next is Resolution 6853, amending the previously adopted formal policy concerning the expenditures authorized by Local Government Miscellaneous Expenditure Act, Sections 13-2201 to 13-2202. Mr. McLean?
I move that Resolution 6853 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6853 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
And this is just the policy we just discussed.
Hmm. Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6853 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution, Resolution number 6854, amending the city's policy concerning the Federal Family and Medical Leave Act.
I move that Resolution 6854 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6854 be passed and adopted.
The change we're proposing in our FMLA policy is to add an anti-moonlighting policy or provision in that policy. So essentially, if somebody is on FMLA, if they wish to work another job, they have to give -- receive permission first. That way, they just don't take FMLA from us. Obviously, those are for some type of serious medical issue, and then be out working a second job. We want to make sure we know about those, and if there's something we can do to help get them back to work for the city, we want to do that.
Questions? Comments from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6854 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, by changing the zoning of parcel ID number 010876706, legally described as Lot 6, Crest addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from general commercial and single-family residential to multifamily residential district.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-2, the title thereof be approved, the rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 22-2, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance number 22-2 by number the first time, ordinance 22-2 by number the second time, and ordinance number 22-2 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance 22-2 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number 22-2 be passed and approved.
The only thing I would add is Plankton's already recommended approval tonight.
I'm really not comfortable with this, so I'm going to vote no. I know it's going to pass anyway, but until I get some more information on this, because I've already had three phone calls over this, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven to one, with Mr. Kerr voting no.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 22-2 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to vacate all of the following described property, lots 2 through 8 inclusive, except the north 44.3 feet of Lot 8, Block 21, Paddocks Edition of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-3, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 22-3, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight.
Rich?
That is approved, eight to zero.
It just didn't click.
Ordinance 22-3 by number the first time, ordinance number 22-3 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-3 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number 22-3 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 22-3 be passed and approved.
So this is the first step of a two-step process tonight. We could tell you where the legal description is at, but where Runza's located. I think everybody in town knows where Runza's is located, but essentially what they're looking to do is they're today built over several different parcels, so what they want to do is vacate all of those various lots they're on today, and then the next resolution you have or ordinance you have coming forward to you is a plat to approve just one parcel where all of the lots they own today are located, so.
Questions? Audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance number 22-3 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance approving the plat of Asner First Edition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-4, the title thereof be approved, the rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 22-4, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules, not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance number 22-4 by number the first time, ordinance 22-4 by number the second time, and ordinance number 22-4 by number the third and the final time.
I move that said ordinance 22-4 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number 22-4 be passed and approved.
Yes, it is Runza spelled backwards.
Any other questions?
[laughing]
From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance 22-4 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to Kurt Higerman.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-5, the title thereof be approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number 22-5, the title thereof approved, and the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance number 22-5 by number the first time, ordinance number 22-5 by number only the second time, and ordinance number 22-5 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number 22-5 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number 22-5 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So Mr. Higerman and his attorney approached the city. He's looking to build some houses in town. He inquired about lots the city owned. We showed him this lot at 9th and Monroe Street. The city acquired this lot, I believe, maybe two years ago. There was a dilapidated house on it. We tore it down as part of our repayment. They deeded the lot to us, and so what we have proposed before you tonight is a contract, which Mr. Higerman would pay the city $2,000 at closing. There would be additional $8,000 owed. However, that payment would be delayed until December 1st. If he builds a 1,500-square-foot house on that lot by that date, that last payment is waived. If not, then he owes you the remaining $8,000 you would have secured by a promissory note and a deed of trust on the lot. We've done the similar terms on other lots in the city.
Questions? Another property on the tax rolls. Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance number 22-5 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6855, executing a contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to Kurt Higerman.
I move that Resolution number 6855 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6855 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion, gentlemen, from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6855 has been passed and adopted. Next item is the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Yes, sir. Come on up, state your name and address. How are you, Larry?
Pretty good.
Good.
Larry Wolken, 1921 Irving. I think I complained back in May about getting these properties cleaned up, and I've been kind of watching, and the big problem properties, nothing is happening. And I hate to see that there was that one on the west side. It's right up to the street, too, and it's getting to be almost a public tourist attraction around town. A lot of people are talking about it, so I'm just kind of wondering what's the holdup, why things aren't getting going on it, so.
I believe the property you're talking about on the west side had administrative hearing last week, and so that is going through our process to have the vehicles removed off of it.
Just the vehicles, or?
Vehicles. Amy's also provided notice on the junk as well, but both are going through the administrative process.
But there's several other properties. There's just one that you're working on?
That's one. I don't know which one you're talking about, per se, but the biggest one over there.
Well, there's a number. There's quite a few on the west side of town, but kind of all over town. I noticed nothing's getting done really fast, so just thought I'd bring it to your attention. I'm watching, and a lot of other people are, too. Thank you.
Larry. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to further discussion regarding food trucks.
All right, so after the last meeting, we went back and looked at the food truck ordinance that we had out there, made some changes to it. So what we have done to the food truck ordinance is we have removed a couple of different definitions, because after making the changes, they were no longer included in there anywhere. But the ordinance before you would only deal with mobile food vending on public-only-owned property, so property owned by the city of Beatrice. And we state that a couple of times in here to make sure it's very clear that it's just with city-owned property. We have now a annual mobile food vending permit. We have a weekly one, and we have an annual food -- mobile food establishment permit. So if you're going to operate the facility, you would get the annual permit or you get the weekly permit. So amigos, right? They would come in, they would get one of those two permits, and most likely the annual one because they're here more often. A place like the brewery, though, could get an annual mobile food establishment permit. So the brewery would get the permit, and they would have the spot designated. They just need to identify to the city within one business day of which actual vendor's going to be in that spot at that particular time. So again, I think the last time we heard, they're concerned with having enough lead time to make sure they can get the permits through, so that's what we've changed there on those. Making it so it's on public property allows you to get rid of all the exemptions, except for, again, we just clearly state that if you're engaging on private property, that's a whole different thing, and ice cream trucks are continuing to be exempt in here. As far as what's required in the permits, again, we tried to just break that down, lay it out very easily for everybody, but most of them, you just got to get this -- you can get the permit early. You just give us one business day beforehand, tell us exactly what details, what vehicle's going to be, there's some of those things. If it is an annual permit, it goes before this body for approval. If it's a weekly permit, it gets handled administratively. Again, just to make sure that people keep things moving. We don't hold anybody up on those procedures. One of the other concerns, last time we were recycling, we've got rid of that one, so that requirement's gone out of there. And then what we also have proposed is amendment to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance would deal with private property. We added the same definition for mobile food vending unit and for mobile food truck. A mobile food truck would be allowed in anywhere that a restaurant's allowed. So by right, it's allowed in LC, GC, CBD, and then by special use permit in light industrial, general industrial. So again, they could have a mobile food truck by right in light commercial, general commercial, or central business district, same way a restaurant's allowed today. The only requirement is that you have to have 2,000 square feet per mobile food unit. What we did is we sat down, we looked at the size of mobile food units. We wanted to make sure they had enough room both for that unit and to get around it, and we also factored in the size of the parking lots that we kind of talked about, having three stalls, so they had some place to pull over to. To give you an idea, Rice's lot at 6th and Monroe Street could fit nine mobile food trucks on it, under this requirement.
Okay, first of all, I apologize. I wasn't able to read this ordinance before it came here tonight, so I got a what-if. So let's say you have a place in the community that has a block party. We have two or three of the neighborhoods that throughout the year they'll ask us to block off a street. So if they want to have one of these food trucks show up for their block party, and they have a weekly permit or a semi-annual permit, I mean, what's the timeline on that? I mean, and can they do it? It's not private. I mean, could we -- could we -- if they say, okay, we're going to park in somebody's driveway, then it becomes -- then it's on private property, then it's without us?
Right. If they're on private property and they're not selling to the general public.
Correct.
Then you are no longer--
But isn't still the general public if it's a--
So we had some better exceptions in here last time. We've taken them out, trying to make sure it only dealt with private property or public property. But yeah, the intention would be there is where--
I would have called you. I just didn't get a chance to read it before. I would have called you prior to the meeting, so.
So yes, the idea there would be is either they could come in and get permission from myself.
Okay.
And that's in here as far as a weekly permit.
All right.
They could go that route, or yes, we'd look to handle it as being on private property and not open to the public, because not everybody's invited to your block party.
Okay.
Similar to when the high school has, you know, Chick-fil-A go out there. It gets me in one of those situations, but we look to handle it one of those two ways.
Okay. It -- the ordinance leaves them an opportunity to have that.
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy.
Any other questions?
What is the -- what is the price that the brewery pays, you know, to be able to have all the food trucks come in and just give a day's notice to who they are, then? What is that price? I didn't see that on--
We -- because we have not done anything with fees yet. We want to make sure everybody was good with us first before we spent time trying to come up with fees and numbers. But I think last time we talked about they would be fairly minimal in the grand scheme of things, but I don't know that we came up with exact numbers after the last meeting.
Well, this makes it really simple, I think. So I think everybody should be pretty happy with this.
I think it sounds much better, but I want to look at it since it's just uploaded at 5:03.
Yeah, there's no action on tonight. We want to have you guys look at it, let us know whether there are questions you have over it, and then if everything looks good, look to bring it back at a future meeting for--
I thought I missed it. I had to refresh to find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I had a router and I couldn't log on. I didn't know what was there.
All right. We'll work on it, bring it forward, hopefully at our next meeting. Next is Item B, discussion regarding amending and renewing the economic development program.
So your economic development program, commonly referred to as your LB840 program, is in need of being renewed. It expires March 31st of 2023. However, you have to take a vote of the people, and you start thinking, well, you've got May election, you've got a October or November election, or you got to call a special meeting or a special election at that point. So that's why you're talking about it now. What we have before you is what we're proposing. you is what we're proposing as amended economic development program. Essentially, it looks like a lot, if you read through here and you're thinking, well, there's a lot of different colors in here, we went through state statute, everything they've added in the last decade, we added back into the plan. Your previous plan said, your plan include anything that the legislature had added, so we just put all those things back in here, there's really been no substantive changes to your LB840 plan, your economic development plan from what was there before. We just, again, updated to make sure it matched state statute. It's nothing new, you've done your LB840 plan in, first it was approved in 1992, then you renewed it in 2002, and again in 2012, and so that's why you're looking again in 2022. What we're proposing is that we have a special meeting next week, instead of a work session, we'll have a special meeting, assuming you guys are on board. If says, if that's the case, then we'll have you approve the language that goes on the ballot, we present that to the county clerk before March 1st, and then we have it on the ballot for the May election, is kind of the timeframe that we're working on at this point. The two biggest questions as you read through here are, what dollar amount do you want to put in, and how long do you want to make the program for? There's nothing in state statute that limits the length of time that you have, we've always done 10 years, I think what we have proposed before you right now is 16, but again, there's nothing that says it has to be six years or 16 years, I've seen, we've seen some as long as 20 or 30, as I go, so the two questions, we kind of need some guidance on before our next meeting.
Is there a downsized to making it longer? I mean, you're, we're at 10 now, you're 16, I've never actually, I guess it missed me, I, in the times I've been on and off the council, so, so I haven't been part of that discussion, but, so if you make it shorter, I mean, are there a lot of things within the program that changes, that you're locking yourself into if you go 16?
No, the biggest thing you're locking yourself into is you cannot amend the dollar amount in your program without going back to a vote of the people, so...
So you just need to make sure you make that big enough that it's usable?
Yes, you've got to, those are the things you have to weigh, going back and having it approved by a vote of the people every time, versus having a longer program. It, it's always been 10 years, I'm not saying it's a good number, it's always what we've done, and I think it's always been $250,000, and so that's what we have in there right now, is 250, but, again, those were what we brought before you for discussion.
I guess, here again, didn't get an opportunity to read it, and I apologize, but I would think that if it's been at that number since the early 90s, that it should be a larger number now. I don't, I don't have a suggestion of what that number should be, I'm just saying I, it seems to me that if, if in the early 90s it was a quarter of a million dollars, it should be well north of that now.
I know it's been 250 since 2012, and I'd have to look back at the one before that to know if it was at 2002 for sure.
Even, even at 2012, you know, there's a lot of difference between 2012 and 2022, so I guess my suggestion would be that we would up that, but...
There's quite a range, too, as we've been looking over some of the other cities, how they do it, there's anywhere from, I've seen 250, 500,000, 750,000, or some will do it based on a percentage, which will equal up to around a million or so, so there's quite a range you can really mess with in there, I think you just can't go above one quart, like, four tenths, four tenths of 1% of the overall annual income you're bringing in from the, like, revenues that are allowed in your statute.
I think it would be important to, to look at the average utilization of dollars that we actually expend on an annual basis, to come up with the right number. I don't know if 250,000 is the right number, it seems like it has worked well for us, to, to jump it, another 250,000 might be something that has reserves, year after year after year, and I don't know that we want to have reserves in that fund either.
Because one thing to keep in mind is, as of right now, you're funding it out of the electric department. If you move money from the electric department into the economic development program, you can't move it back, so it stays there, and it, I mean, that's where it would be, well, stuck's the wrong term, but that's where it would be at.
I get that, but you and I've had this conversation about the electric department over and over and over, they have ample funds, but I, I am more, I'm more aligned with a strict dollar amount, Stan, as you are, I don't like the, necessarily the percentage, I'd be able to, like, because I, I want to be, I'd like to look at it and say, okay, X amount of dollars, I mean, I could do the math, but I, I think that's an easier solution, but I, we're not making the decision tonight, I, I just think that in today's dollars, it should be...
It gives us an opportunity to, to, I guess, digest some of this information. I'd like to see kind of a list at our next meeting of all of those business and industries that these LB840 dollars have assisted with, and I'm, I'm not going, I'm not saying start at the beginning of time, but, in, in maybe the last 10 years.
And maybe what the other communities or sites are doing, so we can make that comparison with our growth, their growth, and how, you know, because we need to know if we're utilizing dollars in the same way.
Typically, do we use up all the...
Typically, we have not, no. Today, you have a balance of about 700, or, excuse me, about $500,000 in there, you have accounts receivable, I believe, of right around $750,000 of outstanding loans, they're being paid back, but you have to remember, up till 10 years ago, you couldn't make any loans out of this program, so it's relatively new for us to have those monies rolling back in.
We do have to be aware, if we have a bigger company that should come here, the team may, may need a little more, I would go along with wanting to raise it a little bit.
And just to give you, like, a note, too, like, certain communities may use it for certain other things, but there's quite an array, a variety of different eligible activities and different qualifying businesses under this, and this amendment also kind of updates some of those, we have some additional qualifying businesses and eligible activities that may be underutilized in other cities as well.
So maybe we need to know what all of those eligible activities are, and just...
Yeah, they're all listed in here.
Page three.
The only ones that are new are infrastructure, which is basically infrastructure outside your city limits, has to do with natural gas pipelines, and...
Childhood infrastructure.
Yeah, so early childhood development, those are really the two new ones that are out there, and relocation incentives, those are the new ones, eligible activities. So we can get some of that information before you put that together, and, like I said, we'll look to have a special meeting instead of a work session last, next meeting, so...
Mr. Morgan?
The only thing on the, the actual timing, or the number of years, I guess I would like to see it fall, so it takes the question out of a special election, so that it expires in a, a year where there is an election to take that guesswork out, because if we do a special election, we need to pay for that.
And 16 years.
Yep. Well, it could be 12.
Could be 12.
Could be eight, could be 12, could be 16, but at least it falls in the election year.
Yeah, again, if it ends in 2039, you'd look to take it to the people in 2038, just like we're doing here, a year early and see if it gets renewed.
Any other questions? The, does next Monday work for everybody? For a special meeting?
Tentative.
It is it?
Okay.
You just have a special meeting?
Right, it would be the 28th. Okay. All right. Next item is the city administrator's report. Tobias?
Again, I've got you a couple of projects that are out there, we have a few projects that have been on the, the drawing boards for quite some time that we're looking to get done here, one's the library roof, it's currently, we're putting the specs together now, put that thing out for bid, but if you've been around, that thing's been in the budget for, oh, I don't know, maybe a decade now, but we're finally going to get that, hopefully done this summer. Same thing with the senior center parking lot, that's been a project that's been out there for a number of years, unfortunately, every time some other project came up, this is one that we kind of deferred, and so we've got some good bids in, we're getting that project done, hopefully in the next couple of weeks even, to get that one finished up and taken off the, the list of things that need to be done. Lincoln Street Study, we had a kickoff with JEO, and so they've started their data collection, if you've been driving around, you may have seen some different counters at different places, counting either cars or pedestrians walking. We're looking to have the first public meeting, March 21st, 4:30 to 6:30, we're looking, trying to arrange a time or a location, I believe we have one, but I want to confirm that before we announce it, but that's the date, we're looking to have our first public meeting, again, way to reach out and hopefully get some impact, input from the public there. Next, this week is a big week for some bids, we've got the Lincoln Street from Fourth to Fourth to Fifth, and then Fourth Street from Lincoln to Grant, we've got that bid coming in this week, so we'll see what that concrete reconstruction project comes in to bid, and now hopefully then, next meeting, we'll be able to come back with that one, and then recommendations on our asphalt projects as well. We've got some bids in on those, but we're waiting to get this bid in, because like everybody else, we're starting to see some supply chain issues, and we want to make sure that we get as much work done at good prices as we can, so... Other than any questions anybody has?
All right. Mr. McLean?
I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:40 PM.
Second.
And moved by McLean, seconded by Bilzbach, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:40 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Thank you, everyone.